Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Page. Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tilller?
Aye. First, next on the agenda is the citizens' comment period. Thank you, Sheriff. First on the agenda, I guess I'm saying it, Delvin Greenleaf. Ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll allow you three minutes. Thank you.
Delvin Greenleaf, 10155 Tunstall Road, New Kent. Forgive my demeanor tonight. I've had a bad day, so I'm not trying to take it out on you. But my ignorance, so I'm here to ask some questions, and one is, when you people make decisions, and I mean you people, I mean everybody that works for New Kent County, the board, all the officers, everybody that works at the commissions, you all work for us. And when you make decisions, are you making decisions that we want you to make? And that's what I'm asking. I'd like to know, right now, for one, and I'm, some of these might be rhetorical. I don't expect you to answer them right now because of my time. Who decided to put up all these cameras now on 249? And who's paying for them? Who's getting the money? What kind of return is this? Did the people of New Kent want cameras up everywhere that we have to worry about constantly? I just, I would really like to know who's paying for that, what kind of return it is, and is it a private company? Because some places, it all goes to a private company. But that's one of the things. And if it's important at all the schools, why aren't all the schools done? Because I didn't see it at the middle school. But that's, on that. And then the second question I have is about internet. I've looked everywhere online. I see that we're making a big deal with Cox Cable. My understanding was that, I've been told for, I've been here since 91. I pay taxes. I have never used the schools. I get fire, rescue, and I get to go to the transfer station. But from what I understand, what I'm seeing from my politicians out there, that they're putting things out, that a lot of money's coming from the federal government, and a lot of money's coming in to do this, and you're spending a bunch of money, and the people that can't afford it are going to get internet. But people like me, that has to struggle with Verizon, painfully struggle, and every month it goes up, I'd like to know what it's going to cost me, and when am I going to get it? Is it going to, you know, I'm paying something like 16, 17 million in taxes now. Plus Cox Cable must have been promised something, because they're kicking in a bunch of money. They must have, and please don't tell me they don't have exclusive, because that's what I've been told for 30 years, that they haven't had exclusive. But nobody else has come into New Kent with all these 200, 300, $400,000 homes. If they could bring internet in, you would think somebody would. But I'd like to know, when am I going to get it, and how much is it going to cost me? You know, I'm getting ready to retire. Is it going to cost me $200, $300 a month for internet service? I mean, some third world countries have better internet service than New Kent County. That's what I would really like to know. And I can't find these answers to questions anywhere online. And when I do look, I hunt through, and it's just terrible. I don't know where to find the answers. And it's painful. That's my time, so.
Mr. Chairman, obviously, I think, Ms. Greenleaf, you live in my district, and I will give you a call tomorrow, and I'll be more than happy to go over your concerns and think and address some of the...
Yeah, because I can't find the answers anywhere.
Well, I'll be more than happy to call you tomorrow, and we can go over all this.
Thank you.
Next on the sign-up sheet, Glenn and Candace Young. Does that sound correct?
Can I have something for each one of y'all?
I ask you to state your name and address for the record, and...
Glenn and Candace Young, 7710 Lees Castle Lane, New Kent. We moved here about a year ago. We've got roots in this county. And we bought in Maidstone, in Maidstone, because at our age we're getting, we didn't want to have to do yard work and everything. But in buying, as you can see on the pictures, ours wasn't built when we first bought. So when we were led to believe that the wall you see there was going to continue down, and our backyard was going to go out. Right now, we've got a yard we can't use. We put a patio in, and it said that, I mean, I've talked to the building inspectors, environmental, I've been to H.H. Hunt in Glen Allen, and I keep getting run around. The yard, according to the original plans, was approved. But when we put our patio in, it extended out nine feet, and it made the drop-off extremely steep. And it doesn't comply with what the county initially approved. So, and I've been trying to find out, for the past eight months, we've been stressing out. And we didn't move here and there to be stressed. We, you know, didn't want all that. That's why we bought a town home. But we can't get any answers. Nobody will help us. Nobody will tell us that it can be fixed. There is a fence along there now, at the bottom of the property line, and it goes into a retention pond. Our neighbors with little kids won't come over, because there's nowhere, they walk out back. As you can see in the pictures, it's steep. You take one step off the patio, and you're going to roll down. And I don't need that at my age. Look at those, my wife. And I'm just looking for answers. Who can make these people do what they're supposed to do? They did not follow the code and the plan as it was approved by the county. It's supposed to be three foot out, one foot drop. We've got three feet out, 18-inch drop. And that's a steep, you know, our friends are elderly. We're elderly. We're scared to go out on the patio. We're paying for land that we can't use.
And it's not safe.
And it's all because of H.H. Hunt. And I'd just like to know where I can go to get the proper help that we need to get this resolved, because we've been dealing with this for eight months.
Our time's up. Can I say one thing? We didn't put the patio in. H.H. Hunt built that patio. That's all we got, the patio, and then the drop. And it's a safety issue, a valid safety issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is the residency administrators' report. Almost skipped you, Marshall. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marshall Wynn with VDOT. This past month, we had 78 work orders completed, 83 had seven after-hour call-outs. Been doing asphalt and pothole repair throughout the county, shoulder repair. Grated a bunch of the non-hard surface roads and added stone to them this past month. Been pipe cleaning, installation of pipe, stage road, I'm sorry, was closed for a couple of days. We didn't give too much notification, but that road was open this morning, so it's in good shape. Been doing some ditching. We completed our first cycle of secondary mow. Second cycle of primary mow has been completed, and we just started our third cycle of specialty mow, and it probably is completed in New Kent. So, other than that, I don't have anything else. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Steers, do you have any questions, concerns?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wynn, thanks for being here tonight, taking time out of your busy schedule. We appreciate it, and the citizens do too. One thing that I brought up at the last meeting was on Cumberland Road. The tree larynx coming across the road, covering up signs, hitting mirrors on people's trucks coming through there.
Okay.
If you would just take a chance to look at that again. And yes, I was out at Colonial Downs briefly today. I just visited. I didn't gamble or do anything else. Just wanted to check out and see how our new temporary roundabout was working, because it had a lot of traffic today. And as far as I can tell, it worked the way it was designed to work. Cars were coming in, very busy, but cars got in there, got in, and just wanted to thank you guys again for the...
Horse trailers and everything, making it fine?
Everything that I saw came in there, everything was fine. So, we appreciate it. And will you be at the Transportation Safety Commission meeting next week?
I've got a Hannibal Board meeting that day.
Okay.
So, I'm sure Philip and Jeff will be there.
Jeff, okay. The other things I was just waiting to bring up at our meeting, at transportation meeting, okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Evelyn?
Good evening, Mr. Wynn. Thanks for being here. I know you missed our last meeting, but I do want to thank you again for attending the Crump Mill Road Homeowners Association Meeting with us. And I know we have a meeting scheduled this Thursday. Looking forward to that. So, I do appreciate you and Mr. Frazier working on this project for us. And I see the signs are up at White House Farms. They got installed this week. So, thank you, guys, for getting that put up for the citizens out there.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Lockwood?
Yes, Mr. Wynn. I was wondering if you had a chance to look into the weight and size limit at the dam at Godden's Pond on Holly Fork Road? We talked about the difficulty of large trucks getting through there.
I submitted that to Bridge Office. I haven't gotten anything back yet. Soon as I get something back, I will get back with you.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Page?
Yeah.
All right. I'd still like to meet with you in the Bottoms Bridge area.
Okay. I'm trying to pick a spot. It's been real busy the past few weeks.
And I was just going to say, any day next week, but Monday works for me, so if something opens up in your schedule.
Okay. I'll give you a call.
Give me a call. I appreciate it.
All right.
And that's pretty much all I had as well. So, thank you again for what you all do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a presentation. Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission Accreditation Presentation, Gloucester County Sheriff Darrell W. Warren, Jr. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Hathaway, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I serve alongside your sheriff on the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. And it is a privilege for me to be here this evening to make a presentation to your sheriff's office. As a chief law enforcement officer in any jurisdiction, we are constantly evaluating ourselves to be sure that we're doing the right thing and providing the services that the citizens expect of us. I'm here to tell you this evening that your sheriff's office is doing just that. The accreditation process is 100% voluntary, and there's only about 30% of the law enforcement agencies in the Commonwealth that submit to this process. It's really about submitting yourself and your agency to outside review. Your sheriff made the decision long ago to be transparent and accountable. There are 191 professional standards that apply to your sheriff's office, but there are many more proofs of compliance within each standard. And although this evaluation occurs once every four years, it is really an everyday process. There must be buy-in from every member of your agency to achieve compliance. Sheriff McLoughlin and his staff were thoroughly evaluated by a team of assessors in March and were found to be in compliance with all applicable standards. It's important for me to also mention that they achieved a perfect score. They had zero file returns. And I can't put into words how difficult this is to achieve, but it says a great deal about your sheriff's leadership, professionalism, and dedication to the citizens of New Kent County. So Sheriff McLoughlin, my friend, on behalf of the Virginia Professional Law Enforcement Standards Commission, I congratulate you and your staff on your accreditation.
Ladies and gentlemen, step forward, please.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. Thank you, Sheriff Warren. It's an honor to have you here, sir. I wanted to bring as many as we could from the office, because this is not a one-person show. Ms. Maria Davenport is our accreditation manager and bears the load of maintaining the records and files. But everyone in this entire agency participates in this, and it's not just your sheriff's office, it's the entire county. We are blessed to live in New Kent County and to work with the people we do. And I have to say, not to down Sheriff Warren, but he's from the second-best sheriff's office in the Commonwealth, and he's here to present to the top sheriff's office in the Commonwealth. Darrell's been a longtime friend, and we kind of came up through the ranks together. And it's been an honor to serve with him, but also I want to thank Ms. Davenport for all of the efforts she put in, and certainly each and every member of our sheriff's office, your sheriff's office, for doing the job they do each and every day. And thank our community more than anything. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda, resolution R-1823, consideration of exception request from Section 91-126A6 of the New Kent County Subdivision Ordinance for the Stanko Family Subdivision. Ms. LaDuke? Oh, there you are.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. So tonight, you will be considering an exception request from Section 91-126A6 of the subdivision ordinance to waive provisions specifying the construction of a new permanent deeded 50-foot right-of-way built to public standards for the proposed Stanko Family Subdivision. The applicant's requesting a waiver from both the road width standards and that the drive be constructed and surfaced with stone instead of asphalt. The lot layout that you see here shows the proposed access and how the lots would be served. Mr. Felts, who will come up in a moment, met on-site with the deputy fire marshal to discuss the waiver request, as well as any concerns that he might have as far as access plans for emergency services. And he didn't have any concerns with what the applicant was proposing. The Planning Commission considered this waiver request at their meeting on June 20th and voted to forward a favorable recommendation to the board. Resolution R-1823 is before you for your consideration, and I'll introduce Mr. William Felts and Mr. Joseph Stanko. Let me make sure this is working first. Okay. There we go. Just keep the mouse on the screen, and then if you want to go to the plat, just click it once, it'll go to the next one. If you can use that mean.
Good afternoon, everyone. William Felts with Land Tech Resources. I was hired by Mr. Stanko to bring forth this waiver, and I'll also be the one designing the actual road and family subdivision in the months to come. Again, we're requesting an exception at 16860 Polis Town Road to the requirements that a 20-foot-wide paved driveway be constructed to public standards for a private subdivision. There are several areas up and down this driveway, which is about 2,500-foot long to the cul-de-sac that we're proposing, that it is not technically feasible to install a driveway at a 20-foot width. I met with the deputy fire marshal just to walk up and down the driveway to make sure that what we were proposing, reducing that to 14 to 16-foot, in some areas, it will actually be closer to 20, were feasible, to make sure that he was comfortable with the emergency vehicle access up and down that road, and he had no issues with their access in and out of that property. And then as far as the paved surface, his only concern was that this driveway support an emergency vehicle with weights between 75,000 and 80,000 pounds, which we will install a section of 21A BDOT stone to whatever specifications required, so that it will handle that weight. Outside of that, we've offered that the proposed family subdivision, each lot will be tied to a road maintenance agreement to ensure that that road is actually maintained in perpetuity. As in five years, each one of these lots developed under the family subdivision ordinance could potentially be sold to outside parties. That road maintenance agreement would make sure that that road is always maintained to the standards that we set forth here tonight and on the plan that we develop. Outside of that, that kind of wraps up that. If anybody's got any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Mr. Steers, anybody have any questions?
It's my understanding you just want to build one additional house, right?
Well, no. The family subdivision, he'll be proposing in the future is four additional lots on to what's out there now. The parcel of land is currently a little under 70 acres, and he'll be creating four additional lots. The code, anything over an additional two lots requires the full public design, private road. So, it's to serve the two lots above and beyond that, too. So, there'll be eventually a total of five residences on that property.
Okay. Thank you.
And there was some concern at the, oops, at the planning commission meeting. The only real concern that came up was the access to it. There is a, I think I did a poor job explaining it to them, but there is not a 50-foot deeded access in that his property is 50-foot wide all the way to Polis Town Road, but there is a 50-foot wide easement that he owns across adjoining properties, including his property from Polis Town Road to the back. So, there's nothing to prohibit him from actually doing any type of work within that access easement, as well as tying that strip of land to a road maintenance agreement in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions? Do I? It's not a public hearing. This is under item two.
Ms. LaDuke, could there be some more lots eventually constructed off of this parcel? I mean, it's 70 acres, so by code, is a 70-acre count in the existing residence?
Right. The parcel right now altogether is 70, once it is subdivided.
Sorry, it's 61.
Is that the whole?
Okay, I'm looking.
Okay. I thought it was larger than that. So, I guess theoretically, if they meet the holding period in the future, they could further subdivide it, yes?
I guess my question would be, what is this?
If there's enough family members. Yeah. I'm sorry.
What kind of, have we done this? What kind of precedence would this be sitting?
It's a very good question. That's why they come before you for the waiver provision.
Yeah, kind of, how large are these lots?
It could be up to nine. The proposed lots?
Yeah. How many acres are the lots?
Anywhere from five to 10 acres each. Some are smaller. I think, I don't know 100%, but I'm pretty sure under the family subdivision ordinance, you could only ever create a maximum of nine lots. So, to answer your question, no, there could never be 40, 30, 40 lots back there without it being an actual major subdivision.
Big rezoning.
Right.
How you doing? I'm the homeowner, or the property owner. Can you go back to that previous slide?
Maybe.
Hit again.
Oop.
Kenny, can you go back?
It's not important, I guess. I currently live in James City County. I have three kids. One of my, my daughter currently lives in the lot that's got the house there. The Lot 3 is intended for my son, who got married there two Saturdays ago. We cleared out some, that space up there in the front. Lot 2 is going to be mine. Lot 1 is going to be my other daughter's, and Lot 4 is going to be my sister-in-law, my wife's sister. So, the intention of this is being spread out for our family. I made a significant investment. It met the requirements of New Kent, for, New Kent County, for a family subdivision. Couple people were here. I had some personal tragedy last year that caused me to take over my brother's kids, so I couldn't put this plan forward last year. So, I'm really asking for you to give me some grace to adhere to the 1231 standard, 2022. It changed in '23. So, barring some personal things that happened, I would have had this plan in last year, which I wouldn't have needed a waiver for that. The only thing I'm really asking for a waiver is the paving, because it's a significant amount of cost to get to the cul-de-sac. So, it's not, it's going on my kids, including myself. I currently live in James City County. I'm an EDA in the county, in James City County. I'm looking to come to New Kent, and I just, this is where my family wants to set up camp. That's all this is about. It's not carving it up in the moor. It's, you know, my son's wedding was in Lot 3 two weeks ago.
So, would you be willing to put a restriction on that parcel that no more lots would be cut off of it?
Absolutely. I have no problem with that. It's, like I said, it's for my family. It's, I'm not looking to develop property. It's not my thing. I'm a business owner. I'm in James City County. Building houses is not my thing.
Is the deed restriction?
What about the property between Polis Town Road and the first lot? Who owns that?
To the, in the front right of me is Ron, a fellow by the name of Ron Ross. That's in the front of me, to the right. I guess if you're looking at it from Polis Town, he's on the left. He's got a, I think, 16-acre plot there.
So, if he's got a 16-acre lot, he's got road frontage, he can...
He does, yes.
Yes.
I only have, when Pat Brock, the original owner, she had bought it to meet the requirements that were there on 1231, 2022. I bought this like two years ago. Again, I tried to get this in last year, but I had some unfortunate circumstances. So, when she bought it, she bought the right-of-way with the deeded strip that was in accordance with the requirements. And that changed as of January 1 of this year. So, that's what I'm saying, is that I'm asking for some grace for a couple of months from what was allowable, 1231, '22. And I made a significant investment. You can see the amount of what the property cost online. To the tune of 825,000, I invested into this.
If they're willing to go with no further subdivision, I don't see a problem. It would all be family lots.
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment. We're here today for the road, and whether or not the road is going to meet our road standards. There will be a later request for the subdivision itself, in which case we can look into how many lots there are. This current map is a proposed map for a future proposal.
Okay.
So, why can't we just wait and bundle it all together at the same time? I mean, if we're, I mean, we're asking for a road to something that may or may not, and that... I mean, can we make the road approval conditional to the subdivision?
I think it could be deferred and heard at the same time, but I don't think they could be linked in one action.
I'm not sure with the, with the family subdivisions, a by-right development, it wouldn't require us to come back for any reason.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not asking for the subdivision. What I'm doing is perfectly legal, just that the...
As part of preparing the subdivision plat, we also have to prepare the plan to design the road. I don't want to design the road until we get through this step.
But the family subdivision by code only allows you to have two more additional lots?
No. I could go to, I could go as...
Without us, without, if you put a, if you put a paved road...
Two more houses would allow him to do nothing out there. It's the additional two over that that's requiring this conversation.
That's what brings in, we're asking for the waiver on the paving. The fire marshal's said it's fine. He's going to draw something up for the stone. I'm just asking for a waving, waiver on the paving, because I got to go all the way back to that cul-de-sac, which is what, 2,500 feet?
That's pretty close to it.
That's a heck of a lot of money.
I guess my question would be, why can't we make this, the road approval conditional... I guess my question would be, why can't we make this, the road approval conditional to the subdivision occurring as stated here? Anything else would take it off the table. So if they go forward and subdivide just as it's stated on our map here, then the road approval that we, if we extend that today, is fine. If they decide to do something else in the plan later, they would have to come back and ask for that permission again. I mean, I think, you know, we're kind of putting the, we're trying to make a decision on something that hasn't been decided yet. And I'm fine with making the decision as long as what is ultimately going to be decided is what we're looking at and we're talking about two different things here.
Could it be an approval for a road to this standard to serve up to five lots? Meaning anything over five lots would not meet what you're approving?
That's kind of what I'm getting at is, you know.
So I think I think that could be done as a condition of how many lots it would, because it, we're talking about what the road itself could support and whether or not it is up to standards, not necessarily what the lots may look like.
I'm comfortable with that. I mean, can we put a, I mean, you guys have an idea of how many acres these lots are. So if we can include some language in there that that says lot size in a range, so that we know that it's going to come back very similar to what we're looking at on the map here, then, you know, we can move forward with the decision, I would, I would hope, I mean.
It needs to be something, because I know we've had people come here before in the county that want to get three or four more lots off of a family subdivision if we made them pave that road. Obviously, you know, I think the board wants to work with you, but there, I feel like there needs to be some type of concession on a deed restriction or, you know, no more lots can be, you know, added on that.
With some type of restriction that says five lots.
Why can't we stipulate that no more than five lots?
It's fine with me.
This road will not service more than five lots.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Can we do that?
Yes.
Let's do that. You always try to ignore me. I don't know why. No, no. But why don't, why can't we do that? And then that way, the man can go home and sleep tonight.
That would be nice.
Mr. Steers, do you want to come up with a way to word that motion?
Yeah, let's see. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution R dash one eight dash two three with the addition of there will be no more than five lots developed on this road, period.
Works for me.
Amen.
Amen.
Is that good?
If the lawyer says so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, who's going to be out there? Are you going to be doing a compaction test and everything on the road?
Yeah, we can, yes, we can hire a geotechnical engineer to do that.
Do you want to add that to the motion? No?
No. I mean, I think just as part of the design for the planning department, I'll actually have to show that anyway, so.
All right, there's a motion. No other questions. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller.
Aye. Next on the agenda, item number three, New Kent County Housing Advisory Committee Charter, County Administrator Rodney Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At your June work session, you received a presentation from the Health Department and Social Services discussing the findings of the Community Health Assessment that was recently completed by the Virginia Department of Health. In that Community Health Assessment, one of the areas that was stated, that considered more studying was affordable and safe housing. Therefore, there was a request and discussion, and I was directed to draft a charter establishing a New Kent County Housing Advisory Committee to look at the current status of safe and affordable housing in the county and therefore develop recommendations to address any solutions that may be discovered. So what you have before you is a charter establishing that committee, advisory committee. The charter calls for each board member to appoint two persons to serve. Then there's also some staff members that will be part of that advisory committee as well. Those staff members include a representative from the Building Development Office, a representative from the Planning Department, myself or my appointee, and a representative for social services, social services. And the, a representative from the Virginia Department of Health, Mrs. Emily Hines, has also volunteered to serve on the committee as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Hathaway? Because I think we, oh, go ahead, Mr. Steers.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring this up. You know, affordable housing, I always thought affordable housing was, you know, any house that sold, because if it sold, somebody could afford it. But I know where we're going to with this, but what is the county's policy on these new, they're called tiny homes that are being built in production? And I think one of the biggest plants is out of Pennsylvania, and these little houses are like twenty-nine thousand dollars that people can purchase and set on their lots and they've got, it's a tiny house, but it's a house. And what is the county going to start allowing that?
We, we allow those now. We treat those as any other house in, that's being constructed or in the county. We have no special construction requirements for tiny houses. So we treat them as all other houses.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
But you can't go build those in one of these subdivisions. I mean, you've got the HOA.
Well, there's some HOAs that have deed restrictions and certain house size requirements. That's not a county requirement. That's a condition that the developer has placed on his, his development. It's a private standard.
Mr. Lockwood or Ms. Page?
If there's no further questions, I'd go ahead and have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution R dash nineteen dash twenty-three to establish and charter the Housing Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page? And Mr. Tiller.
Aye. Item four on the agenda, CVTA Memorandum of Agreement, Planning Director Amy Enman.
I'm actually gonna take this one.
All right.
And thank you. You may recall about, well, a little over a year ago now, I came before you with a memorandum of understanding for the Central Virginia Transportation Authority. That memorandum of understanding was for New Kent to state that we would participate in establishing the Central Virginia Transportation Authority. That authority has now been established and it's been operation, operating for two, going on three years, I believe. And now we're at the point where the CVTA, the authority, is in the process of entering into MOAs with all of the participating nine localities. The memorandum of understanding that you have before you simply states the responsibility of the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, as well as the responsibility of, to the responsibilities of the county, which essentially is that we will use our revenues solely for transportation-related projects. There are some reporting requirements. We are required by that memorandum of understanding that we will submit quarterly reports on transportation activities and spending within the county.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Page?
Um, when CVTA did the memorandum of understanding, the language that was used in this memorandum is some of the same language that was used by the delegate when they, when they formed CVTA. So it's, it's no new, new language. That was purpose, that was the purpose of the authority, and the purpose of the authority was so that we would have enough revenue that if we applied for a smart scale grant, correct Kelly, a smart scale grant, or some other kind of grant, that we would have funds to leverage that grant, those grants. And so that's what this is about.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Any other questions? Mr. Evelyn?
I have a motion if there's another. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Central Virginia Transportation Authority and New Kent County and authorize Mr. Hathaway to fully execute the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller.
Aye. Next on the agenda, public hearings, but we cannot start them till seven, and I think we need a new battery on that clock on the wall. Oh, there we go. So we do have a, before we can have the public hearings, we're going to have a short closed session. Mr. Evelyn, would you love to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go in closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one three for discussion and disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically the lease of office space in the parcel located at seventy-nine one one Courthouse Way.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller.
Aye. We'll be back shortly. At this time, I open the public hearing uh for the New Kent County Chamber of Commerce lease. Mark Daniel? State your name and address and for the record. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and the audience tonight, I'm Mark Daniel. I live at 3936 Ranch Acres Drive in Quentin, Virginia. I'm almost a lifer. I'd just like to take a moment to tell you how important it is to have a strong Chamber of Commerce and what a great job I think ours uh does in the execution of being a Chamber of Commerce. There was a time, you know, where the Chamber of Commerce had lapsed. We went for a while where it wasn't active at all and I can remember being one of the four people, five people on the committee in the Bottles Bridge area when we didn't have any water, any sewer and the Chamber of Commerce, that they coalesced and gathered around that issue and the Chamber was started right there. And um I was the chairman, although I guess I would be the president for two terms. So I want to tell you how important it is to have a strong Chamber of Commerce. When people come to our county, the first thing they want to see and want to know is, you know, what's going on, what's going with the business community? And this group uniquely represents the businesses and they put on the best face for New Kent. So I think it's extremely important that we support them and I hope that you would consider giving, extending them all the courtesy and privilege that you can because they belong there and they do a great job. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Anybody have any questions or concerns? This time I'll close the um public session of the um public hearing to the public. And?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Steers.
If there's no further discussion, I would like to authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed lease agreement between the New Kent County and New Kent County Chamber of Commerce to utilize office space in the New Kent Visitors and Commerce Center.
Thank you, Mr. Steers. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next public hearing, application ZM-01-23, ORPAC's Partners Ordinance O-10-23. Ms. Leduke?
Thank you, sir. Good evening again, everybody. Just gonna give a brief overview of this zoning, rezoning request from Mr. Jason Martin, who's here tonight along with um Mr. Randy Boyd, his counsel. Mr. Martin has requested the rezoning from C1 Conservation to R1 Single Family Residential of approximately 2.595 acres of tax parcel 18-4D. The intent per his submitted proffer statement is to create a building site on the parcel to construct a residential unit in the future. Tax parcel 18-4D is located adjacent to the dispatch station subdivision. The future land use map designates this area of the county as suburban housing. The application was reviewed by all the reviewing agencies and their comments can be found in your packet. The future parcel would be served by available public water and the entrance to the parcel, as you can see, would be from Sparks Terrace. The Planning Commission considered this request at their meeting on May 15th and voted to send a favorable recommendation to the board and ordinance O-10-23 is before you for your consideration. I'll ask if Mr. Martin or Mr. Boyd would like to speak.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Randy Boyd from Charles City and um I think that the materials that you all received are pretty straightforward. I'd only make two comments and one was that this parcel was originally approved by the, your board as a residential, two residential lots and it, for whatever reason, the developer decided to um make them a part of the residue. So what we're asking is simply to confirm what you all did before. And I would also point out that uh your treasurer has been taxing this as a residential lot, this part of the, of the uh residue. Mr. Martin doesn't object to paying for the, the taxes for residential lot, but he'd like to use it as that since he is paying those taxes. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board might have or that Mr. Martin um could, would like to answer if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions? Evelyn? Ms. Page? Go ahead, Ms. Watkins.
Just point of clarification, are we talking about one lot or two?
One.
Okay.
So are we still, are you still interested in rezoning the other piece of property, the second place that we rode to that afternoon to look at? That was, was that in the?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that. The second parcel, um there is ultimately a desire to consider that, but it was withdrawn from this application because there were questions having to do with access and, you know, some environmental questions. So that will go back to the board, uh to the Planning Commission at a later time and hopefully will come back to you in a little bit different form than simply a rezoning uh to R1. But it's separate, it's not part of this application.
Okay, so Ms. Leduke, that's, so we're not really dividing it? We're just changing the zoning on that one parcel, that 2.59 acres or whatever it was?
Right, eventually it will have to be subdivided in order for them to get a building permit. So if this section of that larger parcel does get rezoned to R1, it would have to be subdivided into the 2.595 acre piece to have a residence built on it.
Okay, so this won't create an issue for down the road for the other parcel on the other side of the property?
No.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure we weren't setting up for? Ms. Page?
I'd just point a clarification. Are we talking about one lot or two?
One.
Okay.
All right, I've got a question. Mr. Martin, is this the parcel that we're talking about? This is the second parcel I looked at with you that afternoon? Or is the parcel, the first parcel that you and I looked at?
Yes, sir, this is the first.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, are we still, are you still interested in rezoning the other piece of property, the second place that we rode to that afternoon to look at? That was, was that in the...
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that. The second parcel, there is ultimately a desire to consider that, but it was withdrawn from this application because there were questions having to do with access and some environmental questions. So, that will go back to the board, to the Planning Commission at a later time, and hopefully will come back to you in a little bit different form than simply a rezoning to R1. But it's separate. It's not part of this application.
Okay, so, Ms. LaDuke, that's, so, we're not really dividing it? We're just changing the zoning on that one parcel, that 2.59 acres or whatever it was?
Right. Eventually, it will have to be subdivided in order for them to get a building permit. So, if this section of that larger parcel does get rezoned to R1, it would have to be subdivided into the 2.595-acre piece to have a residence built on it.
Okay, so, this won't create an issue for down the road for the other parcel on the other side of the property?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't setting up for failure here.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
This time, if there's no other questions, I will open public hearing application ZM-01-23, Ordinance O-10-23. Sign-up sheet? And no one signed up, so I will close this public hearing. Anybody else have any questions or concerns or a motion? Yes, Mr. Evelyn, thank you.
I move to approve Ordinance O-10-23.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next public hearing is application AFD-01-23, addition of the TM 101K to the Putney Creek AFD, Ordinance O-11-23. Ms. Adams? Oh, there you are.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. Canis and Joseph Parsley have applied to add tax map 10-1K, which consists of approximately 39.8 acres that they recently purchased from a neighbor, Ms. Galatia Groves. Mr. Parsley currently has an AFD parcel on an adjacent lot to this, which is 10-1, where he currently has agricultural and forestry production with cattle and hay production. The Agricultural and Forestry District and the Planning Commission both gave a favorable recommendation to the board to add this parcel to the Putney Creek District, and Ordinance Number O-11-23 is before you for consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the information in your packet.
Anybody have any questions from Ms. Adams? If not, I will open public hearing application AFD-01-23. Sir? And no? No one signed up, so I will close this public hearing, AFD-01-23. Any other comments or questions from any of the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I know this parcel pretty well, and I know the Parstlys and, I mean, they're farming hay and raising cattle. So, I mean, they're doing what this program is set up for.
So, does that mean you want to make a motion?
Well, there's no other discussion. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Ordinance O-11-23, approving application AFD-01-23 to add tax map parcel 10-1K to the Putney Creek Agriculture and Forestry District.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. All right, that's all of our public hearings. So, this evening, next on the agenda is the elected officials' reports. Mr. Steers, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Evelyn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the Parks and Rec staff and all the volunteers with the county that put on the July 4th fireworks show. I've had numerous feedback, positive feedback from that event. For the first annual, oh, I shouldn't say annual, for the first one we've done, it was a very, very successful, and the citizens of the county really enjoyed it. I'm not so sure they all liked my, Mr. Lockwood's and myself, pie eating contest, because we were no competition for Ms. Hathaway. So, but anyway, it was, it was a good time and well put on. I'd also like to recognize the 16U girls softball rec team. They're going to Florida to the World Series next week, so they'll be representing New Kent in Florida. And as Mr. Steers stated a little while ago, today is the opening day of Colonial Downs, so there's going to be a lot going on the rest of the summer here in New Kent. So, get out and enjoy everything New Kent has to offer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Mr. Lockwood, do you have anything?
I just would like to second Mr. Evelyn's praise for the 4th of July celebration. It really was a great turnout. It was a really good time. I think it really brought the community together in a very nice way. So, I thank all of our staff that put that together. They really did an amazing job, and for the record, I did eat more pie than Mr. Evelyn. But also, I do really want to, I don't want to just walk out of here tonight without recognizing our sheriff and the presentation that was made tonight for the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. Truly an incredible accomplishment, and thank you, Sheriff, for running such a tight ship, and congratulations to you. It probably comes as no surprise to anybody that you achieved a perfect score. Congratulations, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add one other thing about the fireworks. We do need to thank Colonial Downs, because they were the main sponsor and pretty much provided the total cost to that fireworks show. So, there was really no tax expense to the taxpayers. I know I've heard that a little bit, but Colonial Downs did cover the majority of the expenses, because the horses have arrived in town earlier this year for the racing season. So, big shout-out to Colonial Downs for sponsoring that event.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Page? Nothing? And I have nothing. So, we'll move along to staff reports. Mr. Hathaway, I think you said you had something?
Yes. The date of our work session for this month is actually five days from today. Because we've rearranged the schedule of our regular meeting by pushing that back and pushing our work session, there's really a short turnaround between the two meetings. I am recommending that we cancel our work session. I only have one agenda item. That's a presentation from the Virginia Port Authority, which, that's something I can work with them to reschedule.
Sounds good to me. I don't have a problem with that. Everybody else okay with that? I didn't think it would be wrong.
And we do have a motion that we need to take in order to cancel the work session.
You're up, Mr. Evelyn.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the New Kent County Board of Supervisors' public meetings calendar by removing the scheduled July 18, 2023 work session meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Steers. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next on the agenda, any other business, Mr. Hathaway?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's the first time we've changed the schedule this year that it wasn't at someone's request.
Oh, Mr. Hathaways.
[laughing]
Next on the agenda, any appointments delegated by district? Anybody have any?
[coughs]
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Kristen Ilwes as District 3 Representative to the Parks and Rec Creation Advisory Commission to serve a three-year term beginning January 1, 2023, ending December 31, 2025.
Anybody else have any appointments by district? If not, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Is that it?
I do have another one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move to appoint Wanda Espele as the District 3 Representative to the Social Services Advisory Board to serve a four-year term beginning July 1, 2023, ending June 30, 2027. And that is all I have, sir.
I'll try not to cut you off next time.
No worries.
Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next, appointments not delegated by district? Anybody have any for that? Ms. Page?
Nope.
Nope. All right. How about regional boards and commissions?
Nope.
All righty. That being the case, our next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on August the 14th, 2023, and the next work session was just canceled. So, that will be it for August.
Motion for adjournment?
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.